Madam Mayor.
Yes?
I resent the link to Counselor Correll.
Okay.
So hopefully, he's got one of your...
Yeah, I just text him as well, just to let him know that you'd resent it. We'll just give him another minute or so and see if we can get him on there. Just give him another minute or so, and then hopefully, we can keep going. Maybe Madam Clerk, I'll give him a quick call, just to see if he's got it. Okay, so two seconds, please bear with me. So I don't see you on ours. Oh, I can hear you.
It's not working. Okay.
Madam Mayor, just move him over to the panelist.
Oh, okay, so he was on the attendee side. Got it. Okay, so we have everybody, and we'll get to Mr. Correll's face. I'm sure if he goes to the bottom left-hand corner, and he'll see the video. There he is. There's his smiling face. Okay, so thank you for your patience, everyone. Going to pull up my agenda. So it is 6:33, and we will call this meeting to order. Any declaration of interest or general nature thereof? Counselor Olkey, you have a conflict you'd like to declare? You can unmute him?
No.
There we go.
Oh.
Oh, he's muted, and you're muted again. Hang tight, we'll get the clerk to...
I did ask him.
I know. There we go, you're off mute now.
Okay, thank you. Not so much a conflict of interest or anything like that, but in the last meeting, there was a kind of a challenged statement made about the quality of the library board, and I did not answer it effectively. What I would like to say, the record is what the record is. I'm not trying to change what was written or what I said. But what I would like to say is that I have every confidence, every confidence in the confidence of the members of the library board through their education, interest, dedication to the library, and to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Olkey. Any declaration of conflicts, a conflict of interest or general nature thereof, please signify now. Seeing none, we'll go on with our delegations and presentations. And we'll start with Carol Fuller and Howard. It's actually not Carol Fuller, I don't believe. It's Mr. Allen himself. So, Mr. Allen, we'll have you present our actual 2019 audited financial statement. So I'll put the motion on the floor. Moved by Counselor Foddy, seconded by Counselor Mayby, that the committee of the whole recommends that council thank Allen and Howard Allen and Carol Fuller. Carol, I don't believe, is with us this evening for their presentation of the 2019 audited financial statements, but we'll give him the floor at this point. So we'll thank you in advance for being here, and we appreciate that. So please go forward.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. As you know, one of the jobs of the auditor is to make sure that the financial statements of the township are free of material misstatement, that they fairly present the operations and the assets and liabilities of the township at the end of the year. And, you know, as part of our process, we look at the internal controls. We try to assess risk, and we actually do substantive testing at the end of the year to make sure the assets that are disclosed by the municipality do have support. We also look at the operations in terms of compliance testing to see if the internal controls that have been established in the municipality are actually working. And at the end of the audit, we kind of sat down with the mayor and the CIO and the treasurer, and we had a little meeting to discuss our audit findings, Carol and I, and we were able to do that through Zoom. This year has been a difficult year for a lot of audits, because we haven't been able to beat our clients. In the case of Leeds and the Thousand Islands, I'm happy to say that we got there early enough in the year that we were able to get most of our information, and that between Kate and Carol, they were able to get the rest. So just want to thank the staff there for their assistance in doing that. I kind of sent along, and you probably have in front of you, five sheets of paper that we can look at very briefly. I have read the report that Kate is making tonight in terms of her review of the financial statements, and I think you'll find that very helpful. In terms of state of operations, I mean, I think when you look at it, there really has been a parents-to-budget during the year, which is one of the things we look for. We look for any sizable differences. Certainly, any differences that are there, there was a reasonable explanation for them. And at the end of the year, we did end up with a surplus, not as large as we expected, but we expected to get some large capital grants that didn't come through. But we did end up the year with a surplus of about $2.1 million. $1.2 million of that was from the township operations. So if we just looked at the township revenues, the township expenses, excluding any capital revenues, we had a surplus this year of about $1.2 million. As you know, it's important that municipalities generate surpluses, because we need that to pay down our debt. We need to build reserves to replace equipment and building and infrastructure over time. And so I think the, if you look at the history of the township over the past few years, we have been proceeding in that manner. If you go to the next page, which is the state of changes in net financial assets, again, you'll notice that we actually increased our net financial asset position by over, twenty over a million dollars. And again, we didn't anticipate that in terms of budget, but there were a few large capital programs that didn't get completed, the largest one being the community building that was talked about last year. And of course, we didn't get any funding in that project for any time. So if you look at our net financial assets on page, on this change in financial assets, it's close to $6.5 million. And when you go to the balance sheet, the next statement, state of change in financial position, if you look partway down the page, you'll see our net financial assets, about $6.5 million. And that represents all of our assets that can be easily made into cash, including receivables and tax receivable, and then reduces it by all of our liabilities and our long-term debt. Our non-financial assets of about $37 million really reflects our tangible capital assets. So overall, we are showing an equity position of over $43 million. Mind you, a lot of our assets in the capital section are based on their historical cost and probably would cost a lot more to replace them, which is why we are building reserves. I think when you look at the trends, and we have provided you with kind of a five-year financial review, I think overall, the trends are positive. I mean, our tax rate in Leeds and the Thousand Islands is very competitive compared to other municipalities. But I think, as I pointed out to you before, you can't just look at the tax rate. Sometimes, what you have to look at is the average assessment per household and see how that compares to other areas. And, but overall, our tax rate as a rate is competitive. We did make some management letter comments, comments that we addressed to management. One of them related to tax barriers. Our tax barrier is not bad. It's slightly higher than the low-risk number that the problems like, which is about 10% where just went to over 11, so not far off. But we did talk about maybe following up and having a process for tax collections in place. This is somewhat difficult, particularly now in 2020, because of COVID. And as you know, a lot of municipalities have made collections easier for some of their rate payers, but it has varied from municipality to municipality. At the bottom of that page, you'll notice we have our net financial assets and how they compare to revenue and our taxation. And in both cases, we are well above what the call that's considered to be a low-risk position. And you can see that, generally speaking, most numbers have been hovering between 40 and 50% for revenue and somewhere between 60 and 70 for taxation. So again, those are positive numbers. Going to the last page, again, it does show our tendencies. If you look under municipal equity, it shows that reserve, that the percentage of operating expenses are around 50%. And just above that number, you'll see our asset consumption ratio is 48%. So what that means is that if we took all of our assets at their original cost, we've depreciated them around 48%. And the question is, how much of that 48% have we set aside in our capital reserves? And you'll notice down below, under sustainability, the last pull-up, capital reserves to accumulated amortization is around 14%. So we are a bit low in that area. I would say the average of the municipalities that we look at is probably in the 20% range. But we, it depends a lot on your long-range financial plan and whether or not that's an issue or not. We have recommended in our letter that we continue that. I know Kate has got software this year, and that's one of her projects that she plans to work on. But I think it is important that council be engaged in those discussions and talk about long-range plans, because we need to see what the impact is of our plans on tax rates and our revenue that expenditures in the future. I think overall, I mean, things in the township are doing well. I think, you know, you've obviously made some changes in financial management, and I think, you know, you're to be congratulated on that. I think that, you know, when I look at the township as a whole, I really think we're going to progress in that financial area. So overall, I mean, I really thought that this audit under the circumstances went well, and I'm pleased to answer, try and answer, any questions that you might have with respect to 2019.
How did she get muted?
Hello? Okay, you got me now. I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Allen. I really appreciate your opportunity, the opportunity to have you here at this meeting, to have these discussions. Does anybody from the council have any questions for the auditor in regards to the audit he's presented here this evening? I don't see anybody's hand jumping up. Perhaps Ms. Tyndall, did you have anything to add to the delegation, just to tie a bow on it? There we go.
Sorry, three, Your Worship. So I have a few things I wanted to go over, but I'm not sure if it's time to do it now or to wait till my report comes up on the agenda, whatever's best I can do.
We can wait till your report. I just didn't know if there was anything that you wanted to add right now before we thank Mr. Allen for his presentation?
No, I just think that the audit, it went well. Like, we tried to streamline a lot of processes this year and worked with Carol closely to gather the information. And even though the auditors put the statements together, I think staff, myself, worked really closely with Carol to get those numbers. So that's a really positive thing for the township, I think.
Good, thank you very much. Any further questions for the auditor? I would just like to add my thanks. I had an opportunity to meet with the auditor with the CIO and the treasurer a couple weeks ago, just to review this. And the good news is, is essentially, we had put in to play a number of initiatives that the auditor had recommended already. Our treasurer had already started down the path of a number of the recommendations. So kudos to our financial staff and financial department who are keeping up with things and also progressing, and we appreciate their attention to those details. So with that, the motion that's on the floor, moved by Counselor Foddy, seconded by Counselor Mayby, that committee of the whole recommends that council thank Howard Allen and Allen and partners for their presentation of the 2019 audited financial statements. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed? Carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Allen, and thank you for taking time this evening.
Well, thank you very much, and I look forward to spending a lot of time in the locker for it. I spent a lot of time there for a minute or so, and I'm looking forward to it again.
Well, we look forward to having you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on in the agenda to the next presentation, delegation from Brenda Lawley, from the library business plan. And there, Ms. Lawley, you are unmuted, so we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Can I just make one slight correction? My surname was, my surname was misspelled. L-L-E-Y.
Okay, L-L-E-Y, so not, not the extra L. Understood?
Three L's are plenty. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So I have the PowerPoint. I don't know if people have seen the PowerPoint. If you want, yes, you've seen it, Brian, yes, but do you want...
I believe it was part of the package, yep.
Okay, so would you like me to go through it, or would you like me to just answer questions or...
Madam Clerk, is there any way that you can put her slides up and share the screen?
I can...
We can put it up.
I can, I can put it up. I have my IT consultant sitting beside me.
Okay, perfect.
So I have to go down to a small screen?
Yep.
And here's the PowerPoint. So can people see that?
No, you need to go to the bottom and share screen. But I don't know if you can share screen, because you're not an analyst.
Okay.
Mr. Jameson, did you... Just hang on, hang on, we can't hear you yet. There we go.
Yeah, we can, we can, we have it on our split screen.
Yeah.
Pull up our...
So we have the slides there. If you want to go through your presentation, we can scroll through with you, Ms. Lawley.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, so this is a presentation that is a combination of the 2020 budget and the business plan, which I believe was submitted to you back in March. And so how can we move to the next one?
Sorry, I'm just going to...
Oh, there we go.
Okay. All righty. Then I can just...
Just use the arrow key, yeah.
So...
So just asking if everybody's seeing that?
Is everyone seeing that second slide called introduction? Thank you.
There we go, yep.
Okay, so Leeds and the Thousand Islands Public Library has three branches, and they play an important role as neighborhood hubs, offering accessible resources and programs and formats, providing access to computers, wireless internet, and of course, hard copy books and digital books and physical resources. The locations are, as you know, Lansdowne, Sealy's Bay, and Linters, which ensure access to library services across the whole township. Library staff... Right, library staff rotates between the different branches, so that there's knowledge among the staff about the needs in each community. The budget submission is, has been incorporated in this, and the business plan was identified for particular areas of focus, the relevancy of the library to the community, the value, value for money, the efficiency and cost, an increasing impact of awareness of the library and the services it offers, and creating experiences for the community. There are some budget drivers that we unfortunately don't have a lot of control over, obviously, such as our utilities and insurance. And at the moment, there is going to be a budget impact on the fact that we will have reduced fines and fees. There's always a component of self-generated revenue for the library, but with the pandemic and the closure of the library at the moment, and the fact that when the library opens, we have discussed the probability that we will not charge anybody late fees or anything of that nature. So there will be, and there has been an increased demand, particularly for all digital types of material. Our budget savers are the fact that we have a floating collection. All three branches share in our materials, so we do not have duplicate copies of everything. And we also belong to several consortia within the library world that allows us to buy materials at reduced rates. We will also be participating in a cataloging process, freeing up some of our staff, and we can do some share purchasing through souls. This is the administrative expenses of the 2020 budget, and this budget has been adjusted for the fact that we have had some savings in rather an unfortunate manner, that we have had three of our staff laid off for the COVID emergency situation. So you can see that the numbers there are actually somewhat less than what we had previously requested for our administrative expenses. This is a breakdown of administration by branch. So you can see the fact that there is slightly less expense in the smaller branches, but, you know, still fairly considerable. This is the operations expenses of the budget, and again, that is slightly less than the asked from previously. Some of the things that there have been savings on have been things like maintenance. And this is the similar operations broken down by the three branches. The facilities expenses are there, and this is the breakdown by the branches. I just want to point out, the Sealy's Bay, the heat and hydro in Sealy's Bay is considerably more than we pay in Linters, even though they're of identical size, because Sealy's Bay is heated by electricity, so we just have more expenses there. The telephone and internet in Sealy's Bay has also been higher. We're currently working to see if we can get a better package with Bell. We don't have the advantage of Lansdowne Tel, which of course, is we have in Lansdowne. The budget revenues, the provincial grant has been pretty well the same for about the last 25 years, and the municipal grant, our ask on the municipal grant this year has dropped again from what we submitted earlier in the year. This is the summary of the budget with all the items indicated. Circulation by branch is kind of interesting. Lansdowne has far higher circulation rate than the others do. Lansdowne has 41 open hours, each of the branches has 19 and a half open hours. This is showing the in-person visits and the items borrowed. And we have a lot of virtual visits, so these would be the people who access the library for digital things, and that, of course, has gone up greatly in the last three months since the library's not been physically open. The service expectations and performance, this gives an idea of how many visits we have per capita down at the bottom. You can see that it's been increasing over the last three years. It also shows the library use per capita. Now, that obviously means some people use the library more than others, because there are some residents who use the library not at all. The circulation of materials shows that each item circulates 4.8 times through the course of the year. Now, that doesn't apply to every item. Some items may never leave the shelves, but other items might be circulated. So this is on average, and the cost per use is also been dropping somewhat as well, down to $1.70. The digital resources have been under quite heavy use just recently. Canopy is a movie-sharing resource, and it's been used quite a lot more. The library has made the availability of library cards to people who didn't previously have them available by telephone or by internet. So anyone who needs a library card to access, a library number to access this digital content can get it quite easily. So ensuring value, this shows where we want to move from adding value to ensuring value for the community and to see whether the library is an efficient operation. And you can see we've used some comparator figures, both from the provincial median as well as from some of our surrounding libraries. as well as from some of our surrounding libraries with figures for the last two years, or two years prior to the ones that we had full figures for 2017 and 2018. The library has, we're maintaining our membership in the consortia to ensure that we get the best value for, for the materials that we use. And so we, we get 90%, of that from these cost sharing. And we will be developing a system whereby we will have a a service that will do all our cataloging for us. We have previously been doing this in-house, and that will, it'll cost to have this done, but it will free up a lot of staff time. And so we feel that that will turn out to be a much better system with a better, a better use of our staff. The third area of focus in the business plan was to increase the impact of the awareness. And there have been several campaigns that we're trying to do that with. The survey that was sent out with the February tax bill for which we thanked the township, we have got back responses, not as many responses as we hoped to have. But it has been useful, and we will use this to build on information for our strategic plan, which will be a main focus of our activity this year. I just want to point out some of the community responses. One of them that, towards the bottom of the screen, love the grandparents kits. I don't know if any of you have had an opportunity to use those, but they are quite fun for for people who don't have a lot of equipment and things in their house for young people. The creating experiences. The library is doing a variety of things from providing programs to providing staff to help users. We have one staff member who's been through the reading awareness program and others who'll be doing that. The purpose of that is for people who come in and say, I really enjoy reading this kind of book or this author. What can you recommend? And so we're hoping to be able to help with that. Materials are provided both in print as well as digitally, and we have computers and help with using those computers, and a good many people come in to use those for a variety of things. The programs have, the variety of programs, a lot of them for children, from lab brats and cookies and canvas and a variety of other things, as well as some programs for adults. And the attendance has been increasing there. These programs are offered at all three branches. And measures of our success will be if the library successfully shifts the processing of materials to provide staff to focus on public service. And we anticipate this will be particularly important post-pandemic. We don't quite know what our library will look like at that point, of course, but I guess nobody knows what the world will look like. Within the framework of the budget line for staff, the library is hoping to provide year-round employment for students and library assistants. And also budgeting, within the budget, cataloging supplies. The library will be able to fill all staff desk times and have two people working as a support chain program. We also have two people working on any of the evening shifts in all the branches. The, this is just a comparison of the numbers of titles that the library has. We have been slightly below the provincial average. We have, sorry, is that a question? Nope. And so one of the things that our consultant who helped with the business plan has recommended is that we try and increase the number of titles that we have, the average title per capita, from 10.16 up to the provincial average of 13. And so we will be working on that. So the goals are to work with the current library vendor to streamline the selection process as well as to ensure the library continues to find the best books with its funding allocation. The library will measure its success through the circulation of materials in all formats with a goal of an increase of 10% over the next two years. And the other measure is to increase the titles per capita, as I've just mentioned. So the library has been working on this during the shutdown period, so when we reopen, we hopefully should be quite close to that goal. The creating experiences. Our computers have been used a great deal. We have, everyone on our staff has a basic ability to help people with computer use, but we do have two staff members who are specifically trained in tech support. And one is a full-time employee, the other is a part-time employee, but they are able to help people with nearly all of their computer requests and challenges. So the question of course now becomes, how do we reopen safely? Our CEO has put together a five-point program, which has been developed in concert with public health and with all the other varieties of plans that have been coming forward. The important thing, of course, is to make sure that our staff is safe and that any public that enters our libraries over the next little while are kept safe. So it's going to be a challenge. We will, until the the permission is to open the doors, we will continue to provide digital support in terms of eBooks, audiobooks, and of course, movies and other downloadable materials. The library is currently doing a curbside pickup, so people can phone and request certain materials and just come past and pick them up. This has also been used for some of the children's programs. A lot of recommendations have been put out, but some households have not been in a position to provide perhaps the materials in the program, so those have been put together in little curbside pickup packages. And so that's our end of my presentation. And if you have questions, I will attempt to answer them.
Okay, thank you so much for the presentation, Brenda. Before we have any questions, I'll put the motion that's on the floor in regards to this presentation. Motion is made by Counselor Mayby and seconded by Counselor Fode. That committee of the whole recommends that counsel thank Ms. Lally for the library board presentation, and that the committee of the whole recommends that counsel approve the library board budget, 2020 budget, I should say, request in the amount of $423,401. So I can take questions, and if we can get back to, so if you can stop sharing your screen, Brenda, if that's possible. There we go. Now I can see everybody in case they put their hands up to speak or ask questions. So Counselor Mayby, I will recognize you. Who else? Does anybody else have any questions in regards to this presentation? Deputy Mayor, Counselor Jameson, oh, everybody, okay. Hang on two seconds, I just want to write this down. So Counselor Mayby, you go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. I had a couple of questions. The increased demand during COVID-19, is that internet service, people streaming in, or is it people outside of the library buildings themselves streaming in from their cars or any other means? That's question number one. And the second one is, who is the Linderst internet provider? Is it Bell? Is it Lansdowne Tel? Thank you.
Okay, as far as people in increased digital use, it's, it's a variety of things. There's certainly people sitting outside the buildings or using that, but it's also, you can, you can dial into the library and download things directly through their, their computer systems. Your access, of course, is your library card number. So not everyone can do that, but people who do not have library card numbers can obtain them, as I've said, you know, without any kind of personal contact. And the internet provider in Linderst, I know that we have WTC, but I don't know that they're, I think they're our internet provider in Linderst.
Thank you.
So we actually deal with three different providers, which is a little bit confusing, but that's the way the township works, isn't it?
Just a follow-up then. With Sealy's Bay, WTC uses the Bell Canada lines. Can you align yourself with them for the Sealy's Bay to decrease your cost?
There, there has been, just in the last about two weeks, I know that the CEO and our financial person on staff have been discussing this, and they are hopeful that we can get a very much better package with them. So if that's based, you know, savings will be reflected over the remainder of this year and going forward.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jameson, then Deputy Mayor Lackey, then Counselor Fode.
Thank you, Your Worship, thank you. There was a rather robust petition out of Sealy's Bay. Quite a large number of people responded, and I'm wondering, because I don't see it in this plan, how the library is going to just address what is considered to be a considerable disparity with respect to the service levels when you reopen in the two smaller branches relative to what most people consider the main branch in Lansdowne.
We, you know, reopening plans are still in process, because of course, we have no idea when that's going to happen. But when the library reopens, it will be reopened in an equitable fashion so that the hours will be distributed between the three branches. And everyone will get as much or as little as we are able to provide until we get the all clear and go to full hours.
Okay, go ahead, pull up.
Just supplementary to the extent that, let's put COVID aside for a minute, Chair Lally, and look at that survey in its own context, because there was a large number of people that participated. And the survey that the township included in the tax bill did not address specifically what branches may or may not need with respect to hours of service. So my question was really putting aside the COVID response, which is a challenge for us all, of course. How are we responding to a perception, and it may only be a perception with study and data, that, that recognizes these two smaller branches? A lot of people feel very neglected up in our end of the pond, and what is the plan going forward to try to address what is considered some inequity there? Or, or is that a coming plan?
This, there, there will be, the, the survey that we put out with the tax bill, we did not get nearly as good a response as we had hoped to. Some of that might be truncated. There may have been people sitting around on their survey forms thinking, I must get this in. And then, of course, the library shut down and a lot of things got offside. So we will have to do some further study, and that survey, the much more robust survey, will have to be part of our strategic plan, which is our next major activity that we have to work on. Over the years, the CEO has always kept library statistics, and among the library statistics, we always keep usage within the branches. Occasionally, we, we will have information about usage per time, per day, but certainly there's always usage over the course of each month. And the usage in the smaller branches is much smaller, is much lower, as I think I showed you on that slide, than in the Lansdowne branch. So we, we have to provide service where service is demanded, where service is used. And while we would like to increase the hours. Yep.
Well, if, if I can respond to that, there really isn't any data to support that there's greater use in Lansdowne based on hours of operation. I know that in the smaller branches, they'd like to see more attention to evening hours. So that I understand what you're saying about usage based on the actual number of hours these libraries are open, but the disparity in the actual number of hours that are open is such that one can't measure without actually going to the community in a very scientific way, find out what the potential use of these branches is well before one makes a decision, well, they're not using it as much. If it's not open, they can't use it. So that's, that's been a long time. And my, my almost 10 years in the area has been a long time concern. So I, I take your point, and I respect the effort in this movement on this plan, because it's certainly more than we've seen in the past, so this is much appreciated. But the whole point about these smaller libraries not seeing a level of service that they believe they need, whether they're accurate or not, we don't see the science that supports it one way or the other. So to say that the current usage reflects the demand in the community, which I'm not suggesting you're saying, but if somebody were to suggest that, that would not be accurate based on the data that we have in hand. So I would encourage you, as you move forward with this strategic plan, to ensure that, as you mentioned, and I underline your, your statement, that a robust community survey be done in a way that really identifies need. I know that when we draw comparisons to other communities, and I've taken the time to do that myself and chatted with others, I recognize that we have a comparable number of hours, say, and Rita Lake is raised, but they do that over five branches. And, and this is a part I'm not quite sure, because it seems like our library, the money is up and down and it's back and forth, money is given back, money goes out. But if you try to draw a line over several years, we operate with more investment from the municipality with fewer branches and not spread out as evenly, but we don't know what evenness is. So on behalf of the people, my community, my community of Sealy's Bay as well as Linderst, we really think there needs to be that robust attention that you mentioned in order to move forward. It just seems like a reasonable way of going about it, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay. Yes, thank, thank you, Counselor Jameson. We'll, we'll, you know, make sure that that gets incorporated into the strategic plan. Thank you.
So I have Deputy Mayor Lackey and then Counselor Fode next. There we go.
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you, I'm going in a different direction as far as the expenses with the COVID, with everything that we're doing. The numbers as far as administrative expenses are very, very similar. They haven't changed, they haven't come down very much. Similar to the operations budget. You know, we're kind of giving less services, but we're asking for the same money. And as far as, you know, in my new business, we call it touchtime. And as far as, you know, in my new business, we call it touchtime. You know, how much business are we doing in the library as far as, you know, are we, when we keep track, is it when somebody picks up a magazine, do we count that as a rental, even though they put it back down and walk away? I mean, numbers seem to be unusual as far as usage.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The, there, I mean, there has been no in-house usage in libraries since the 15th of March. But there are still four employees who are working, working from home. Some of the employees do come into the library branches, because if they are pulling books for curbside pickup, people have to be there. During the initial part of the shutdown, staff was doing a lot of inventory work and some of the work that they would be normally trying to fit in during, you know, regular week, they were trying to do that at that time. So we have three people on pandemic layoff, but we do still have four people employed. And I, you know, I think there's a great many businesses that continue to work from home as it were, and the library is doing that, providing whatever services are possible to provide, and I think those are, you know, quite considerable. People are using their internet resources a great deal more now, and the library plays a part in that.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Lackey, is that all your questions?
Yeah, I have comments, but I'm not going to give them.
Okay, Counselor Fode. Oh, we'll just wait till you're off mute. There we go.
Excuse me, I didn't know I had to un-mute myself. Your Worship to Ms. Lolly, just want to put a comment. I had four individual taxpayers that asked for comments on their tax bill. In all four cases, the survey was still in the envelope that the tax bill came in. I just wonder, that might have been a reflection of the lower survey, because we, we as a council deferred the taxes, we may have deferred your survey unknowingly.
Oh, how very interesting.
Just a little food for thought. I couldn't help but notice in all four of those cases, the individuals, neighbors somewhat, pulled the tax bill out of the same envelope it arrived in, and in that same envelope was your survey. So it was just a noted thing of mine, but I did not comment on the presentation.
Well, thank you very much for that information.
It's just an observation. With regards, follow up to Deputy Mayor Lackey's numbers, I noticed in, in the, in the wages section, there was an increase of a little over $35,000 as compared to the benefits, which basically stayed the same. When I see something like that, it tells me that the same number of staff, there's been an increase in wages. Is that factual or no?
I mean, people would have the cost of living increase, of course, as, as everybody does. But the, I don't know that there has been a particular increase in wages. Sorry.
Sorry, have you ever go back to your first screen there that you presented with the numbers on, it's right there. I, that's what I.
Yeah, the salaries and wages.
We don't need that back up on the screen, but I mean, that's just something I noticed last week when I was going through this.
Okay.
What I do want to make as a comment, we as a council, myself individually as one, we're quite frankly, I was critical of the library and the presentation that was made in the past as far as, as far as budgets. So I'm going to reverse that tonight. Thank you. For the presentation you have put forward, it's thorough, it's explanatory, it's kind of the numbers I'm looking for as a person trying to make judgment on the library. And with those that helped you walk through this, I know our good counselor on your board, Counselor Olkey, has worked a lot through you to the library and passed on, you know, kind of our requests and requirements. And I just want to thank you for putting forward what at least I'm looking for, and I think other counselors would see it that way as well.
Thank you.
And are there any other comments or questions in regards to this presentation? Counselor Garret.
There, just backing up a little bit to the service expectation, performance, and so on, I see a very healthy increase in your virtual visits, an increase of 43%. Other areas are increasing relatively modestly, and so that ties into operating cost per use. Are, anytime someone clicks onto the library for any reason, is that a use? As, as Counselor Lackey was suggesting, if I pick up a periodical in the library to use, if I open the door to the library, so when I see a 40, 41,000, pardon me, 40,000 virtual visits, is that a use? And is that therefore my year-over-year operating cost per use should show some significant declines? But I'm just curious, does it mean much? Thank you.
Not really sure I know how to answer that. I think, I think the use figures and the cost for use, a lot of those probably are more items borrowed from the library, so they may be more print materials, people who are streaming via the library. So if somebody dials in and streams a movie or downloads an ebook, I believe those would be considered as uses. And that, of course, is, you know, changing considerably year over year, because those facilities just were not available to the library a few years ago. So I, I'm sorry, I can't answer that. That's a good question, though.
Counselor Jamison? Oh, we just need, there we go.
Gotcha. To, Your Worship, just to note that if it's a virtual use, and perhaps the chair can let, educate me on this, if it's a virtual use, a downloaded book, an audio, or so on, that's bot-driven, it's not staff-driven. In other words, the technology exists because one, one doesn't need any staff to do the virtual thing, that's a contract with Hoopla or whomever else to provide a certain number of uses per film, per book, and the copyright is all taken care of. So that's a different kind of use, but it is not staff-driven, it's pretty much bot-driven. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
Yes, we would have a contract that would allow that to happen with Hoopla or Canopy or Overdrive. Yeah.
So we could probably break down the numbers one way or the other, in-house versus virtual versus, because I think the point that's trying to be made is that if, if this crisis moves us towards more digital use versus less in-house use, do we need more staff or less staff? Just in-person visits would change, I would believe, so. Sorry, Deputy Mayor, you had another question?
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, you know, I, I think we've left this to the point where I think we're here to approve the budget, and I think we should defer it again, and leave that up to our Treasury Department to look a little bit deeper into this. Seems to me that's a little bit too much for what, what we're providing as far as service. You know, again, I go back to looking at the expenditures, and I, rather than lose it all, I'd like to defer it again.
Thank you for your input. And before I take your point, Counselor Olkey, I just wanted to add that it hasn't been discussed yet, and I don't know if it's been made public, but the audit that was done in tandem, well, not in tandem, but the audit, the same auditor audits books of the library, and they, there was a $53,000 surplus in last year's budget. That was to, that has been returned, I believe. Director Tyndall, do you, can you speak to that a little bit more closely?
Yes, through you, Your Worship, if you, if you look at your consolidated financial statements that the auditors were going through at the end, there's actually a section, it's the library audited statements, and they ended up with a surplus at the end of the year of 53,000, which was returned to the township.
Okay, so the fifth, out of last year's budget, sorry, I'm trying to flip between screens, and I apologize here. So out of last year's budget, which was 400, trying to go by memory, and I'm not doing a great job, so.
It was about 450,000.
450,000, so out of that budget, there was a surplus of 53, and that was on a regular year. So I think, and I don't mean to paraphrase you, Deputy Mayor Lackey, I think in light of the COVID crisis and the fact that we are having to rein in our own budgets at the township level, trying to find efficiencies anywhere we can, that it's very important that we get this right. Because if there was a surplus of 53,000 last year, and the budget ask for this year is increased over last, then to me, maybe there's more, more pencil scratching to do. That's just my input in that, and the only reason I had that number maybe more top of mind is that it was brought up at our meeting with the, at the auditor. So Counselor Olkey, I'll let you speak, and then we'll try to wrap this discussion up so that we can move on with the rest of the meeting. Go ahead, Counselor Olkey. Oh, sorry, you're still muted.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you, I hope I'm speaking loudly enough now.
Yep.
The, the hope, you know, we have flogged this library about presentations, we have pushed them from pillar to post, they have responded. I would be in favor of passing the budget with the proviso that it be enacted with prudence. In other words, perhaps the levy could be split between certain periods of time and a readjustment made. But I think the way the library has responded to the various requests and pressures we put on them, and I've been the one doing it in, in their environment, I think we should respect the work that's been done here. And perhaps there's a way to phrase it in financial terms. We quite often approve something as amended or as it will be amended, and perhaps we can go with a formula like that. But I'm in favor of passing their budget and letting them get on with their work, because this is just wasting our staff time and driving them around the bed when it isn't necessary to do that. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Olkey. So the, the motion that's on the floor currently right now is moved by Counselor Maybe, seconded by Counselor Fode, and the Committee of the Whole recommends that Counselor thank Ms. Lolly for the library board presentation, and the Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the library board 2020 budget request in the amount of 423,401. Unless I get an amendment that has a first and a secondary, that's the motion that's on the floor. So Counselor Jamison?
I take Counselor Olkey's point. I certainly respect the, the attention of the board to the change. So we learned that another 53,000 was back, was 194 year before. I think part of the challenge is that over a period of years, a lot of questions were not being asked, as, as we tend to ask them now. So out of fairness to the library board, some members of whom have been on for some years, questions were not being asked, we're asking them more. My concern is, is that there's an inconsistency in the numbers going forward and going back. And so I think that the concept of a deferral is really to do with the broader challenge of COVID. We can continue, library can continue to bring the bills and get them paid and be assured that at some level it can function in COVID, in this, which is going to go longer than I, I mean, everybody thinks it's over for some reason, but it's not. So what I'm concerned about is a commitment that allows an expenditure that I, quite frankly, not sure quite yet whether the board has control of it. And that's my concern, because it has been all over the shop for a number of years. So I support the library board and its efforts to bring us better numbers and a better overview of what it's doing, but with the stuff coming in the door, back in the door, I just wonder if on a staff level, there's a real comprehension of how to manage the asset, which is why the deferral, for me, is, should be an option. That's it.
Counselor Maybe? There we go.
Thank you, Worship, and through you. Is not our financial department, as in Ms. Tyndall, very connected with the financial statements of the library now? And in the past, our financial department has not been as active with the library board in ensuring that the financials are up to date and correct? Thank you.
Ms. Tyndall, did you want to speak to that?
Yep, through you, Your Worship. No, I'm not involved in the daily financial situation of the library. We, we do pay their employees through our payroll system, but other than that, they manage their own expenses, and I don't see where their financial results are, so I didn't know where they were at until, for example, this year, we, we got the number from the auditor when they were completing their year-end, which I think was like March, March of this year. So I'm not privy to their financial transactions or their financial statements during the year, where they're at.
Okay, follow up, Counselor Maybe?
Hey, Your Worship, I too am in favor of what they presented, since they have taken the time and made a great effort to come back to this committee more than once, or council, sorry. And I do believe that they have brought back a good budget and are probably a little bit more cognitive of our due diligence in trying to ensure that they are staying within guidelines and, and that we are looking closely at their books to ensure that our tax dollars are being utilized properly. Thank you.
Okay, in light of the timeframe, and I've not received an amendment to the motion that's on the floor, I'm going to call the question. So all those in favor of the motion as it's been presented, please signify, please hold your hand up, one, two, three, four, all those opposed, one, two, three. Okay, the motion carries, and the library board budget is approved for 2020. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lolly, for, sorry?
I didn't see your hand.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was a nay. I apologize. So I have the checklist here, so I apologize, nay. So the motion carries by one, and the budget request for 423,401 is approved, and will go forward for 2020. And next year, I'm sure that this will be a shorter process because of the things in place. I'm just glad that we have put this to bed and we move forward in, for the rest of the year. Okay, so thank you, Ms. Lolly, and we'll move on. Okay, so actually, we're going to take a break, because I'm really bad at pushing through this, we'll take a, a personal break for five minutes, and then we'll be back here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, it asked me if you, if I will allow you to unmute me. That's why I was like, oh, what's going on here? I can't unmute myself, which is good. You can shut me off at any given time, Madam Clerk. Okay, so we have Deputy Mayor Lackey back. Oh, there he is. And we still have, I think we have the, still the full gamut. Okay, so thank you, everyone, for your patience with the delegations. I know that went extra long. We'll begin back into the meeting with staff reports, finance report number FN-01420, 2019 year-end financial statements. So the motion that's being put on the floor is moved by Counsel Foddy, seconded by Counsel Mavy, that Committee of the Whole recommends that Council receive finance report number FN-01420, 2019 year-end financial statements and that the following be adopted. One, that the draft for the 2019 audited consolidated financial statements be approved. Two, that the draft for 2019 audited trust fund financial statements be approved. And that the 2019, number three, that the 2019 operating surplus of 242,747 be moved to the Woking Fund Reserve Fund. Any discussion on this motion? Maybe I'll have Director Tyndall speak to it first before we take any questions or concerns. Go ahead, Kate.
Okay, thanks, through your worship. So just a couple of things I'll highlight quickly. And I'm happy to answer any questions or go through the financial statements in more detail, even outside the meeting if anybody would like to understand them better because they're pretty exciting. The two variances I'd just like to point out for 2019 were, one was in corporate services, so corporate management and support, basically, we had a bunch of revenue come in and then go out of the operating funds through a transfer to reserve funds. And that was because we received the municipal modernization funding, which was about 630,000. We also received more gas tax than we budgeted. So when you're looking at the statements and when you're looking at the budget to actual report, the same format that we provide on a quarterly or monthly basis, you'll see that we're over budget, but on both the expense and the revenue because the net effect is zero to the operating budget, but we are flowing those through because that's best practice for accounting practice. And then it makes it easier at year end when we are doing the consolidated financial statements. So moving forward, we'll be trying to make sure we budget those items better so that there won't be that variance there. The other variance of note is in operations and it's to do with the landfill and it's a couple of reasons. One, recycling, which I know we've talked about previously and Director Goheen, I think, has explained and it's to do with the recycling and just the market and the pricing there. So that was over budget as well as a number of costs that were actually budgeted in capital. And that's, I think, been the past practice for the township, but that's not, they aren't actually capital in nature. So they get moved to operating at year end. And there was a significant amount spent there this year. Typically, it was funded from an accrual account that we have set up, which is intended to accrue money to have for future use for closure, post-closure landfill costs. Again, it's explained fairly well in the notes to the financial statements. And so what we did this year is we moved those costs over into operating because that's where they need to be from a financial statement point of view. We did not fund them through the accrual account because I wanted to keep the accrual account intact to make sure we do have money in there for future costs. So we're going to be basically trying to budget those costs out of the property tax levy going forward and not touch that accrual account. If anything, we should add more money to it. Other than that, just a note that the building department is funded separately. So we did end up transferring about $137,000 that year end, so that was good. And the water and sewer operations, again, they're separately funded through the rates so they don't affect the tax levy. And we had a transfer of about 157,000 from that statement this year to their reserve fund. And then just on page 98 of the agenda package, just wanted, again, if there's any questions on the observations that the auditors included, I've included our current status. So all the items that I think the auditors have pointed out are things that we are in finance, we're aware of and we are working on trying to make improvements. So if there's any questions on that, I'm happy to answer those as well.
Thank you, Director Tyndall. Questions for the director? Counsel Foddy, Deputy Mayor Lackey. There we go.
Thank you through your worship to our Treasurer. I didn't ask this of the auditor because being our numbers, I thought I'd say this to you, Ms. Tyndall. On page one of the auditor's report, can you explain on the other section, the government transfer of 7 million? Like what did that encompass to make that number jump off so larger?
Ms. Tyndall, or which page are you talking about?
I'm on the very, the very first page of the auditor's report, the revenue expense and other.
So is there a page number at the bottom?
Uh, page eight, sorry.
Page eight, okay. So it's eight of the audited financial statements.
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm on the same page now. Do you?
Under the other, under the other section, it has 7,200,000.
Okay, sorry, yeah, through your worship. Again, unfortunately, like the auditors put the statements together, which creates a bit of a disconnect from me understanding 100% how they put together, put them together. So in future years, I intend to actually put them together myself with our finance staff. But I believe that's because the capital budget would have included government transfers for the community building that we had budgeted. And obviously, we didn't receive that. And I can tell you what the actuals are made up of if you're interested in that. But I think that's why there's such a large number there.
Yeah, that's, that would have been the, the government commitment for the building of the new landstone community building. That's what we had hoped for or had applied for, but it never came to fruition.
Well, I was going to say, this is the government commitment that was never committed.
Correct.
Should we all do our books this way? No, I, I, just joking, of course. But no, when I saw this, I thought I would save this for our own questionnaire as opposed to the auditor. But when you're looking at, you know, the previous years of 375 and 755 and then all of a sudden it jumps to 7.2, you know, it did get my attention. Thank you, Ms. Tyndall.
Deputy Mayor Lackey, you have a question?
No, it was more of a comment to, to our Treasurer, Tyndall, that given the circumstances that we've all had to deal with, she's provided us with a tremendous amount of information and a great report. So I really appreciate that, Kate. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Seeing none from the gallery, I'll just make my last comment. The only thing that was anywhere, you know, I don't want to use the word disturbing, but worrisome in the long term, is the asset consumption ratio. So I believe the auditor spoke about it in his presentation, his delegation. We're at 40-some percent and we really should be, or close to 50, and we should be at 20. So the good news is, is that our asset consumption, though it seems high at the moment, the asset management software and the path that we're going down with asset management will directly relate back to our planning for asset consumption. Because in the past, it's all been done ad hoc without a coherent plan. So one of the things that the auditor said a number of times during our meeting was that, oh, we recommend this, but Kate's already done it. Or, oh, we think you should do this, but yeah, Kate's already, or they've already put the policy in place or the policy's up for review. For example, the tax collection policy that you're going to see later tonight. Those are all things that were on Kate's radar before the auditor even brought them up. So we're in good hands for sure. But obviously, our reserves, we need to continue to build them because things continue to increase in cost to replace. So we need to make sure that we're prepared for those expenditures down the road when they arrive. So anyways, any other comments, questions, queries? Seeing none, I will call the question that's, the motion that's on the floor. All those in favor of accepting the audited financial statements, please signify. All those opposed? Carried. Thank you. Next motion that's on the floor is moved by Counsel Mavy, seconded by Counsel Foddy, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that Council approve finance report number FN-01520 dated June 1st, 2020, and that option two, final property tax due date of October 23rd, 2020 be adopted. So Madam Treasurer, do you want to speak to this before we ask for questions on this?
Yep, through your worship, thanks. So I think the report was fairly straightforward. It's based on the budget that was approved by council. I've included a bit more information than I think you might have seen in previous years. The table includes all of the portions of the tax rate and outlines the amount of levy for each portion that we collect, so the county and the education as well as ours. And then just, yeah, we, we put two options in there for the due date just because of the COVID-19 situation. And whichever council wishes to move forward with, then we will make sure it's reflected in the bylaw.
Questions for the Treasurer? Counsel Jameson, then Counsel Mavy. There we go.
I'm on, I think, yes. Your worship, I certainly support the idea of the delay. I think there are other questions this raises, which in, well, broader context, what would we expect or do we have an expectation of arrears or failure to pay in any sense? I know that's, it's asking the Treasurer to speculate on how we may as a community behave. But it leads to my second question, so I'll ask her the first question, which is, is there any anticipation or indication that we are going to see delays or failure to pay or bills that will have to be lowered because of the impact of loss of revenue, et cetera, et cetera?
Madam Treasurer?
Through your worship, at this point, it's, it's really hard to say. Unfortunately, we haven't seen a huge impact thus far. But I do think that the, the impact will be more, more significant when we've, when we issue the final bills. We really don't have any options in terms of reducing people's taxes. What we can do is try to work with them and institute payment arrangements, payment plans, to try to set something up so they can make maybe smaller payments and over a period of time. So we definitely have talked about that in the, in our finance staff, that that's the direction that we are taking with, with residents. If they just give us a call, let us know if they need help coming up with a payment arrangement, we're happy to do that. Unfortunately, I really don't know the impact to the receivables. I've been in touch with other lower tiers, trying to prepare notes and see what everybody else is doing. But yeah, I'm sorry, I don't even want to try to guess at what the impact might be.
Follow up, Mr. Jameson?
Yes, please. Your worship, so I think I am hearing that there is an expectation that we may run into some challenges with the issuing of the second bill. So I guess it's more of a comment than a question, which is, one, we, we need to be prepared for that. And two, sorry. You know, Prime Minister calls, I'll just put them on. Seriously, though, very serious observation that we need to be prepared for the fact that some people will have challenges. The Treasurer is indicating that she will work to accommodate those people. But from the perspective of council, we have delayed, we have deferred, we postponed. We passed a basically business-as-usual library budget. But not, that notwithstanding, I think we need to be prepared for the fact that we are going to have to push some things we might want to do into the next year when we do that budget. into the next year when we do that budgeting for 2021. And I'll also comment that, that I was going to do this later, and I will, the issue of listing in on a county meeting and seeing quite a different attitude about what taxpayers are going to be able to manage this year than we have been doing. So I hope, given all that we've seen, that we maintain a very careful consideration of our, our budgeting as we go into the back half of the year. Thank you, Treasurer. And I want to echo the comments about outstanding reports that we get from our Treasurer.
Okay, then I believe, sorry, Council Maybe, then Council Oki, and then Deputy Mayor, did you have your hand up? Okay, so Oki, then Lackey. So first, Maybe, and then we're gonna throw Fodey in on top of it. Okay, go ahead. Just have to get Mr. Maybe unmuted. There we go, go ahead.
Thank you, worship, and through you. I have a few questions, so I'll pose them all. And then whoever needs to answer them, please jump in, I guess. How many have asked for delayed payment so far, even past our due date, which I believe has, has come and gone? So that's question number one. Question two, is the county doing any other concessions similar or have they? I don't, I know we asked a question, but we weren't sure what the response was, I believe. Thirdly, next year, will all the taxes be set at a normal timeframe, given our information so far? And that could change, I realize, if this pandemic continues too much longer. And Kate, great job also on, on the financials. Very, very happy with what we're seeing. And again, I believe option two is the way to go for us for this year. Thank you.
Director Tyndall?
Through your worship, so we haven't, so far, we haven't really received a lot of calls asking for delayed payment. Again, the interim bill went out and we deferred the due date. But I think because of the timing of when COVID hit, and even though we did, we did delay the due date, a lot of people had already paid. And maybe because the impact of that COVID-19 pandemic wasn't really known, people were paying. So we haven't seen a hugely significant impact from that. Again, obviously, it's hard to predict what will happen when the final tax bill gets issued, and that's where we could run into some more issues. The county has not provided much assistance in terms of giving us assistance in dealing with these issues that we're facing. We've had one call, which was several weeks ago now. I've been talking to other lower tier Treasurers to, to try to just work together, come up with ideas and see what they're doing. But the county thus far has not seemed to be very proactive in their approach to dealing with this. I would suggest that, I would think that next year, we would have normal timeframes again for the tax due dates. I think we would hopefully go back to a consistent practice of what we have been doing in the past, and that this would be like a one-off this year because we're in the midst of it. I think people next year will, certainly, there'll be some issues with some people still struggling financially. And that's partly why we're bringing the tax collection policy as well tonight, because we want to try to be a bit more clear in the policy, what it means, so that staff and residents and council all has a clear understanding of what that process looks like, and we can try to make sure we, you know, we're transparent in how we're handling the tax collection and work with, with residents that might need help. And just going back to Council Jamison's comments, I mean, the other thing I think that senior management's really aware of is when we're managing our budgets this year, for the rest of this year, we will be, you know, obviously, very careful in what we're spending because we do know that there's a potential for some significant loss in revenue or some tax write-offs. And we might not see all of that this year, but we want to be prepared. So making sure that we're mitigating what we're spending to try to offset some of that potential loss that we might see in the revenue. And I think the senior management team is well aware of that. And we will continue to provide those COVID-19 update reports where we've, you know, we've, I think, projected about half a million dollars in cuts or deferrals already for this year. So maybe we'll bring that back around in next month to just make sure that that information's still up to date.
Thank you, Director Tyndall. So I will recognize Council Oki and Deputy Mayor Lackey. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Wondering, are we absolutely wedded to the schedule that we have for taxation? Looking ahead, this, and other people have said this, the economic crisis may go on for some time. It may not just be over because they open restaurants again. A constituent pointed out to me that the separate community of Athens asks for half the levy in March, as we do. But then they go for 25% of the levy at the end of July, and 25% of the levy at the end of September. That would spread things out rather more easily. And I'm thinking of my constituency in the North, perhaps more than the South. But with the economy the way it is and the way it's likely to be for some years, that might be welcome in the South as well, especially given the stock market. But anyway, just a thought. And I wonder what Ms. Tyndall would think of that. Thank you.
Ms. Tyndall?
Through your worship, so the Deputy Treasurer and I actually had a discussion about that, and that was one of the options we talked about. And when we, when I put the report together, the reason we didn't actually include that was because, as she pointed out to me, it ends up being twice the work administratively in terms of accepting the checks and payments, posting them into the financial software, and then preparing deposits and so on. So it's just administratively, it does cost us a little bit more. It's more work for staff. But not to say that that isn't a viable option, as you pointed out, that might be helpful for residents.
Hey, Deputy Mayor Lackey, and then Council Fodey, and then Mr. Gurrell, did you want to weigh in after that? Got it. Okay, go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. I'm looking at our levels of service to our taxpayer. Obviously, we're not hiring students. We're not, we're definitely not providing that level that we normally do. So I'm, I'm wondering how we can take advantage of the taxpayers and make them pay full amounts when, you know, they're not getting the service that they depend on or deserve. The other is, I believe we should extend the trash tag. I understand we're, we're charging for trash again. You know, we've got to offer our taxpayers something during these hard times because there's a lot of people that don't work or unable to work, can't work. We're, as far as I'm, I know, through you, your worship, are we still not under state of emergency?
They are under state of emergency still.
So I think we need to offer some more services to our taxpayers.
So your points are well made, Deputy Mayor Lackey. I just want to get back to, perhaps it's something that we can deal with after this motion. Because I think this motion is very specific in regards to due date for taxes. So it's a separate conversation to talk about dump tags and those sorts of things, which is...
Sure, I understand. Yeah, no.
So as far as the changing the due date to October 23rd, is, do you have any suggestions or any changes to be made to that? Or were you okay with that? Good, okay. Council Fodey, and then Council Jamison, Council Gurrell? Nope, no Jamison. Okay, so Council Fodey and then Council Gurrell.
Thank you, worship, and through you. Just a comment, for those of us political junkies, if you will, that delve into things like taxes, the average taxpayer does not, you know, either reluctantly even pay the tax bill. And I can't begrudge them that sometimes. I think maybe more so than ever, Mrs. Goodman could devote the next newsletter to the township and actually get quite specific. Ms. Tyndall had reported here and kind of give us a breakdown on the appendix of some of the references in here. Perhaps we could apply some of those to the newsletter. I think that, I think the taxpayers need to know some of the very basics. I think it was Council Jamison who had made the point that, you know, we are not in a position to defer any taxes. The Treasurer had also made that statement. I don't think not everybody in the township or the residents realize that. So I think some of the real pertinent, hit-home notes when it comes to paying your taxes need to be explained. And if a lot of people are off work right now, as the Deputy Mayor says, this might not be coffee shop information, as most of them are closed. But still, people might have more time now to read it and maybe absorb a little of it. As for reference to monies down the road, I think we're all cognizant of the fact that, you know, we're gonna be doing some more belt tightening, as has been referenced by a number of counselors here. This isn't over, it's far from it. And with passing, if the library board is still watching, even though I pass the library board budget, I, I not only would like to see, I expect them to adhere to a budget process that, that we had asked for and they now supplied. I would expect them to adhere to that and, and prove to us what they can do in a COVID situation. You know, because we passed a budget doesn't mean that that's all free-for-all money. It's yours to manage best you can. I think that's enough I need to say at this point. Kate, I'll take this opportunity to, to say to you again, as I have sometimes in the past, the way you present a budget or anything to do with finances in our township, it makes me swell to the point I feel like I'm an accountant myself. And it gives me great confidence when I go through this at home and feel like, you know, I'm starting off about four or five notches higher than I would expect to. So thank you.
Thank you, Council Fodey. Council Gurrell?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a note in that Counselor, Counselor Fodey mentioned newsletter items regarding update on some general information about taxation. In the report that's coming up, FN-016, Kate has put together some nice words in there about tax policy. And you wouldn't have to go unless you really want to get into it, which I don't think most people want to go that deep. I think it covers a lot of those areas. That's my first comment. Secondly, on this business of deferral, date deferral of tax, I'm curious, we have commercial residential part broken down. Do we have a sense of, I mean, I can certainly see residential, pardon me, commercial taxes being very challenging. But I just wonder if we had a sense of who it is that we're benefiting. I'm not by any means against deferral of tax, but you still have to pay your tax. And at the end of the day, I'm not sure, it just accrues pressure at the household and so on. So I just wondered, is, I like the approach of a phone call and so on, and instituting a tax repayment plan. So by deferring by five weeks, and then these questions come to us, now it's Christmas time of next year, and we're just starting to deal with these issues. They're gonna come, if they're gonna come. You know what I mean? If someone is gonna have trouble, they're gonna have trouble in, in September, or they're gonna have trouble in October. So I'm not sure that the deferral, as sweet as it sounds, sounds like a great political stance to take. But realistically, I'm not sure it's the way to go. Commercial businesses, they can come and talk. They know how to talk about taxes. They understand that. A household might be saying, gosh, you know, I'm living paycheck to paycheck here, or whatever. Does that really help that we're deferring five weeks? Or are they just in, up to their knees now? I'm not sure about this. I really have mixed feelings. Politically expedient, yep. Helpful, not sure. Thank you.
Okay, Council Fodey, and then we're gonna wrap this discussion up.
Thank you, your worship, through you. Counselor Oki had mentioned earlier about maybe a split payment. Deputy Mayor Lackey would like to be best to answer this. Did we not have that one time in our township, a three-time payment per year? Seems to me we did.
Thank you, and through you, your worship, I believe we did. Yeah, yeah, we did.
Counselor Jamison, if you wanted to weigh in? We'll just wait till you...
I, I apologize, I know we're belaboring it, but I, I, I have to turn to Counselor Gurrell's very eloquent statement about you're just delaying the inevitable. And also, when you start to push it later in October, you're also starting to deal with the pressures going into the year-end for people and other things that they start to consider. So first, you know, I, just based on what I'm hearing, I like the idea of moving ahead, business as usual in that respect. But to the Treasurer's point about working with people on a case-by-case basis, as it arises, maybe the most, is the most gentle way of dealing with the challenge that some individuals will face. So I, I defer to Counselor Gurrell's very good point.
So to wrap up the discussion that we've heard so far on this particular motion, would it be more, while I can appreciate that we want to provide relief for those who need it most, what if we went back to option one, which is leaving the date the way it is, with our regular scheduled date, but have a clause or an offer out there to anyone who makes a call in or an email to say, I need to spread this payment over the next four months, that we'll honor it and not charge any interest? If they're willing to call in and make up that arrangement? Because I don't want to seem unkind as a municipality to, and unfeeling to those who are suffering the most. But I think, as Counsel Jamison said, Counsel Gurrell put it eloquently, delaying the inevitable will only delay the inevitable. So we don't want people to get any further behind, and they don't want to get further behind. But if we can alleviate the, the interest and penalties for those people who call in with sincere, sincere wish to, to make their commitments, which most people who have mortgages, their taxes are paid along with their mortgages, just as an, as an aside. So I think that will, and I know that even for people who have deferred mortgage payments, the lenders, the institutional lenders have continued to take taxes. So the tax payments will still continue to be made, even though they might not have had to make their mortgage payments over the last a while, just for interest's sake. So am I hearing that correct from the consensus of the group? Because the, the motion as it is on the floor is option two, to defer to the 28th, or the 23rd of October, whereas option one was to leave the date, which I believe is September 20 something. Sorry, I don't have it up in front of me. I'm looking at all your beautiful faces, so. Counselor Maybe?
Thank you, your worship. I'm still on option two. Sorry, we, we already deferred taxes in the, in the spring to help alleviate. A lot of people aren't back to work, a lot of people do work from home. But there are people who aren't back to work and will not be back to work until maybe midsummer. So they're gonna be catching up. And if they're having difficulty on October 23rd, they can come to us then, just as indicated for September 18th, and ask for relief or help. I don't think it's going to harm our bottom line that much, but it is going to help the residents who really need it greatly. So I'm still on option two. Thank you.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Lackey, and then I'll put the motion up for decision. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, through you. For anybody that has never been in that position, it's hard for somebody to pick up the phone and ask for help financially. And I don't, I think you'll find a lot of people, if they're put in that position where they have to call up the township office and let someone know about their hardship, won't do it. So I'm with Counselor Maybe. We, we let it slide a little longer and see what happens.
Okay, with the councillor Gurrell, and then I'll call the question. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I realize that councillor Maybe made a good point in that if, if we move into a phase two and a phase three, the provincial government, and there is more opening, I do see the argument that it does provide a big check that hasn't been there for many people, and perhaps it is a very good idea to defer the payment. It's not my first choice, but I do understand that and I would vote in favor of deferring. It's politically expedient, there you go.
Okay, with that comment, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor to defer option two, option two, the final property tax due date to October 23rd, 2020? Please identify yourself. All those opposed? Okay. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is motion by councillor Fodey, second from councillor Maybe, that the whole recommends the council receive finance report number FN 016-20 dated June 1st to approve the new tax billing and, sorry, and collection policy. Discussion on this motion. I believe Ms. Tindall provided in great detail, a much more concise, um, policy. Ms. Tindall, what was the old policy? What year was it based off of? 2000 and something?
Four, 2004.
So our tax collection policy had not been changed since 2004. So, um, it needed a refresh. Uh, so Kate and the deputy treasurer worked diligently to bring this up to date. Um, so she's happy to entertain any of your questions about that. Anybody have any questions in regards to this? Councillor Jamison?
Yes, because I didn't take the time to go back and read the entire 2004 tax policy. Um, are there, is, is there anything that is going to jump out to the average resident as being profoundly different? I mean, I know we're bringing it up to date and I, I appreciate the good work that's been done, but are there landmines there that we should be aware of as, as residents? This compared to the regime we've been working under?
Ms. Tindall?
Your worship.
Through your worship, the 2004 policy was largely actually copied and paced from the municipal act, so somewhat, um, time consuming to read. So yeah, we, we really just tried to simplify it, um, and make it kind of a one stop shop for somebody who wants to try to easily understand how taxes work, what impact does, what we do. Um, and the main change that is in this policy is actually because the municipal act changed, so the legislation changed and we can now start a tax sale after two years instead of three. Um, so that's the biggest change and that's to bring the policy in line with the new legislation that came out in 2017.
Any further questions for the treasurer? Councillor Fodey, then councillor Gurrell?
Thank you your worship through you to Ms. Tindall. That new policy change of, of property sale in two years, is that provincial or federal?
Uh, it, it's under the municipal act, so I think that would be provincial.
Okay, councillor, oh, did you have another question councillor Fodey? Sorry. There we go.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, with that answer, yes, I do, uh, that, that's a little bit scary maybe to some people, especially given our current situation that we just voted on. I mean, the people to think that their properties are in a rear sales position in 24 months. Um, although I, I, I fully understand where you're going with bringing ourselves in line with provincial policy, um, I think the timing is, is anything but good. That's just a comment. I'm not saying we should change it, but, uh, man, you're gonna, you're gonna scare a lot of people who are already in arrears with taxes with that one.
Your worship, may I?
Yep.
Um, so yeah, through your worship, so if you, um, if you have a chance to look through this, there's actually like a, a number of steps that would happen before you would get to that point. Um, and even when we get to the point that they've been in arrears two years, we issue a tax arrears certificate. Um, and then they have an opportunity, I think it's a, a year after that, I think it's a significant amount of time that if they again make a payment arrangement with us in a specified manner, um, and that they would, then we would cancel the arrears certificate. So it might sound scary in a sense, but it actually is quite a long drawn out process. And again, we, like, we don't want to get to that step with taxpayers, so what we really want to do is try to be more proactive and having some focus on this policy. And then, um, hopefully the deputy treasurer, we're trying to kind of align some of her work so she'll have more time to actually spend on collections, um, that we can proactively help people and not get to that point. And, and there are, like, if you, if you read through all the steps and if you happen to want to read the municipal act, it lays it all out as well, then it, it's quite a long process, so.
Um, just to add to your comments, Kate, uh, one of the things that you might remember at this council table during our term of council, there was a tax arrears, uh, an individual that had come for some relief. And I believe, I want to say that they were almost six years or more in arrears. So, so while the policy sounds scary at two years, and like Director Tindall had said, you know, it's two years, but then, you know, it just means that it, it's more of a legal line in the sand that we can, you know, start to put a little more pressure on people. And I do realize the timing is not necessarily the best, but, um, we have some, some chronic, um, late payers here in the township over three years and some, I didn't want to say that they're around the four or five year mark, like, they'll come in and then they'll make arrangements and that sort of thing and start making some payments, which is what we want. But I think the whole impetus is to do that earlier so that we don't end up with more arrears than necessary. But that's just my own take on it. It was one of the things that I had discussed with the deputy treasurer before our treasurer had come in. It was a concern of mine that we had a number of, um, people who were, uh, a long time, not just the three years, like, it was five, six years. So, um, anyways, but I think that's also an internal function that Kate is getting a better handle on as well, because without, without having a treasurer for a few years, that created some challenges as well. So now there's more focus on some of these things, so. Um, sorry councillor Maybe, you had a question?
Yes, thank you your worship and through you. Firstly, when it comes to the two year term opposed to three years, it, it only just starts the process just a little earlier, but as mentioned, the concessions can be made to catch up on the arrears and, and make everything good again. Also with the impact, uh, they were supposed to assess this year and they held that off for another year because of the COVID-19, which may change some of the taxes for next year. And then again, my question possibly to Kate is, with increase of taxes, has it ever been to an extreme level that has caused hardship on the person who's being taxed for land that you are aware of? Because impact, when they change their, their numbers, sometimes it can impact adversely and/or even let it go down. So just wondering if there's anybody that you're aware of that have ever had issues with increases and has that put them into this arrears situation? Thank you.
Through your worship, um, yeah, through your worship, I'm not, I'm not remembering anything firsthand where an assessment has gone up because of evaluation by impact that would cause, that would cause specifically them to get into arrears to a point where they end up in a tax sale situation. Um, typically the people that end up in tax sale, um, usually pay enough taxes to avoid the tax sale in the, uh, year. And then they get behind again, like, they're always kind of living on the edge of just trying, trying to stay ahead of the tax sale process. Uh, I have seen some significant increases in assessment, um, but they're phased in over the four years and usually those properties, um, are of greater value.
Okay, and further questions for the treasurer? Councillor Gurrell? Oh, we need to get you off mute there councillor. Sorry.
Thank you, through you your worship. I'd like to thank Kate for doing a pretty nice job on this. It's very readable, unlike the municipal act. However, I just, I just want to add that perhaps, I'm not sure if it's necessary, but my gut instinct is it is, we should put a clause in there because the municipal act, the assessment act, and taxation in general is such a broad subject, and you've done a great job of highlighting, uh, billing and so on. I think we should put a clause in there that says, and we can defer to the municipal act as required, because there are many, many clauses in there, which I'm sure you're aware of, and I've read a bunch of them the last few weeks, that, uh, don't come up in this. You know, there's, there's all kinds of little tweaks that, uh, that I, that are available to municipal governments, even, even lower tier. Unfortunately, it takes agreement from an upper tier government, which will be challenging, but I think we just need a little clause in there perhaps that says, um, and any other municipal act clause that we deem necessary at the time, just to open up those possibilities. Because we can also offer, as you're well aware, very rarely used apparently, but we can offer, uh, what is it called? Hardship, uh, unrequited hardship or something is the name of it. Municipalities rarely, rarely is, it's in there, so one never knows. I would just add a clause, I don't know how to word it, but I would put a clause in there. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great point and I would probably get differ to CAO to, to help me with that, that clause.
Thanks Kate, yeah.
Uh, CAO, you wanted to add something?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you your worship through you. Um, of course, all of our policies have to comply with law. So by, by, um, inference, uh, we have to administer our tax collection bylaw in accordance with the municipal act. So it's, it's, it's almost stating, you know, if we put a clause in there that we're gonna follow the municipal act, it's, well, it's something we have to do anyway, councillor. So I, I would be, um, you know, we could, we could look at putting something in there, but it, it really isn't going to have a whole lot of effect. Um, the, the other thing, you're quite correct, there is, uh, some, some sections in there for undue hardship, I think it's section 365 of the municipal act. Uh, and it requires, uh, for a lower tier government, uh, if it does, uh, offer that, um, it has to have consensus with the upper tier government, or else the full burden of any, um, relief given falls entirely upon the township. So, and, and the, the, this is something that we have explored with the county and the, the, um, indications are they, they don't entertain this kind of thing. Um, it's an administrative burden to offer such a program, and that's why an awful lot of lower tiers and even single tier municipalities don't offer this. Um, it's full of subjectivity, it can get us into an awful lot of trouble from a legal standpoint, and it takes up an awful lot of resources to administer. So, um, that's why you don't see that used very often. Thank you.
Councillor Gurrell?
Thank you very much for that, and I do appreciate that. I was using that just as a, as an example of a clause that you can't cover all the clauses, otherwise you'd be rewriting the municipal tax act. Uh, another area that came up was, uh, uh, consideration for reassessment. I, I'm gathering that that sort of thing, and I'm thinking of, uh, large industries, large businesses that might initiate their own, uh, reassessment. And then we would get caught up in that, we might want to end up in a court with them. Does that fall under this, uh, impact clause here and so on? Uh, do we need to deal with that? Do we need to be, uh, you know, we reserve the right to be in court? Or does that fall under assessment review board applications and, uh, impact request for consideration? Because it could be the township issuing one, or it could be a business or a person issuing or going for a reassessment. So is that relevant in any way to this tax policy for us? Thank you.
Uh, through your worship.
Go ahead, thanks Kate.
Um, uh, so a taxpayer can file a request for reconsideration if they're not happy with your assessment, um, and, and they deal with impact directly on that. The township really has no authority or input into what the assessment is, that's based solely on what impact's assessment is of their property value. If they're not happy with their, their results from their request for reconsideration, and please keep note that this is my understanding and to, if, if you want exact, I'd have to go back to the website and do some more word research just to make sure, but this is my understanding is, if they're not happy with impact's approach to their assessment, then they can apply to the, um, assessment review board, which is a separate body that which would then review, um, and basically is like a legal proceeding, and we are pretty to that proceeding, like, we are involved to the extent that we wish to be, so we can, um, attend the meetings. However, again, really, we typically would not engage on either side because it's usually impact against the taxpayer and we, really our role is just to administer what impact gives us as an assessment and then tax the resident, and we don't have any, um, say over what that assessment value is. So typically we provide information if it's requested, and a lot of times we follow along on those assessment review, review board, um, meetings and decisions, obviously because it does impact our tax base.
Oh, sorry, Brock has a question again? Sorry?
Just to be more direct, what about the casino? If they went to, if they went, uh, through all the appeals, and that's a big business in our township, um, does this tax policy, again, is it in the impact section? Is it in the assessment review section that if a commercial business goes for reassessment, that puts us in a position of, we're not going to be quiet about that necessarily? We might want to speak up and say, you know, put in our two bits about a commercial business like that going for a tax break, which I've heard might be the case. Thank you.
I don't, I don't think that we have, I, I'm just going back to Kate, and Kate, you will probably have to research it, but I believe that the, the appeal, the request for reconsideration, and then the appeal board are independent and do not ask for input because all they do is they look at comparable properties in other jurisdictions that have, um, and they look at land value, and there's a number of different factors they look at. It has nothing to do with, um, uh, with our tax rates or what have you. I'm pretty sure that we don't have a say in that, or at least I've never heard of it. Um, Kate, maybe you could do a little research and then, uh, help clarify that for councillor Gurrell?
Yeah, through your worship, yeah, we don't. So the casino has a review, um, they have appealed their assessment right now, so, uh, I think we've provided information and actually the county, um, is involved when it comes to, um, these type of situations and they have, we have a lawyer involved that's helping us, that's an expert in these type of proceedings. So, um, we do deal with them, um, but we, we can't so much as fight it in the sense that they do base it on, um, either commercial sales comparing to other commercial properties of similar like, uh, fashion, or they're looking at, um, resale values or other things. So unfortunately, we, we don't really, we're not given a chance to really give an opinion in terms of what the impact is on our tax levy or in our tax base.
So the motion that's on the floor is in regards to the policy that's being presented to approve the new tax billing and cap and collection policy. Are there any further questions in regards to this tax collection policy? Saying none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting the new tax billing, sorry? I've got, I've got two. Did somebody try to speak there? Okay, everyone is in favor of that? All those opposed? Very, thank you. And thank you for that input, and I would too, I too would be interested to know more about the appeal process. I'm, I'm fairly certain I understand it, but I want to make sure that I understand it wholly. Um, the next motion that's on the floor.
Excuse me, madam mayor.
Yeah?
Counselor Jamison has a question.
Oh, I apologize. Counselor Jamison?
Your worship, sorry, maybe offside, and you can push me off, but we've just been discussing taxes, tax deferrals, we've looked at, you know, postponing a collection date to help our residents and so on. But I would ask your worship, if I might comment on the county meeting that I attended, because in the context of finance and taxes, is that still relevant to this discussion?
I think it actually is, because it's about tax collection and the due dates in which we have to adhere to. So if you want to give your two cents, I don't want to let that go too far down the road, because we still have things on the, on the meeting, but I, it is in regards to what we've been talking about, so go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll be very quick. I attended the last county meeting, and I appreciate that our mayor raised with the county, with county staff, whether there was going to be any effort planned, whether there was a plan to defer, delay. In, in, in short, simply our approach, which has been to be very carefully managing our funds, and I was very concerned to hear that the, the response was simply to our mayor's question, "Well, we're monitoring it, we're monitoring it, there, there is no proactive plan," I would call, "to be ready in the back half of the year for challenges." And that was a concern to me, because our portion, if I remember correctly, is about forty-four cents of every dollar that goes to, to education in the county. So at the end of the day, you know, we're collecting money and other, it's going elsewhere. The other thing I'll say for the, to, for the mayor's, to the mayor's credit is that she, she stuck to it, and I was sorry to see that only a couple other of her colleagues supported the call for some sort of explanation as to whether there was going to be a plan, and there appears not to be, and, and then they, the conversation moved off. So I just want to express my appreciation to our mayor for raising this concern, and I think it's something we need to keep an eye on, because it's the same taxpayer.
That is the ultimate point to be made, is that there's only one taxpayer, whether federal, provincial, and just to elaborate for two sentences, all of the federal and provincial funds that are coming in aid are still coming from the same taxpayer. So while we all look to certain, excuse me, certain levels of government to save us, or help us, or assist us to get through the tough times, and I'm not saying they're wrong in assisting us, but somewhere down the road, that pie for needs to be paid, and we will, we will be paying, our kids will be paying, our grandchildren will be paying, and, and for quite some time, this crisis will drive a lot of debt for the country, for the province, and hopefully, hopefully, we can avoid it here at the, at the municipal level, if at all possible. We have the tools in place if we need to, but hopefully, we can manage our pennies well and, and avoid that at all costs in the end. So, thank you for the kind words, Counselor Jamison. So the next motion that's on the floor, moved by Counselor Maybe, seconded by Counselor Fode, that Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the zoning bylaw amendment attached to planning report number PL-01520 as exhibit E to rezone a portion of the subject property from Recreation Commercial CR and Shoreline Residential RS to the Shoreline Residential Special Acceptance, Exception 52 RS-52 zone. Madam Planner, did you want to elaborate on this, or this is pretty much what we've already discussed?
Thank you, through your worship, this is pretty much what we discussed earlier this evening with the subject of a public meeting. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any discuss, further discussion on the motion that's on the table? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion at hand, please signify. Okay, the motion carries, thank you very much. Next motion on the floor, moved by Counselor Fode, seconded by Counselor Maybe, that Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve zoning bylaw amendment to rezone the subject property from Rural RU to Shoreline Residential RS attached to planning report number PL-01620 as exhibit F. Any further discussion, Madam Planner? I think it's the same one that we saw tonight, just want to make sure the numbers are not flipped or switched. Any further questions? It was nice to hear the people speaking in favor of it and talking about good stewards of the land this evening, so I appreciate those people who joined us on that, to have their, have their say. So all those in favor of the motion at hand, please signify. All those opposed? Carried. Okay, so next on the staff report list is operations report number OPR-01220, request for speed limit reduction. So moved by Counselor Maybe, seconded by Counselor Fode, that Committee of the Whole recommends that council approve the reduction to the posted speed limit on Hag Road from eighty kilometers an hour to sixty kilometers an hour, and that Committee of the Whole recommends that the appropriate bylaws be prepared for council's consideration, and further that the Committee of the Whole recommends that council authorize the purchase of two pole-mounted roadside digital speed readouts to be funded from the Infrastructure Capital Reserve. I'll ask Director Goheen to speak to this first before I take any questions, so that he can provide a little more context. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. This is the first request that I've seen come through during my time here at the township. So I've, I've applied sort of what I consider the appropriate review of that request, and it's relatively self-explanatory, but I will add that a review of the posted speed limits within the township is on my work plan for the operations department, as there are a number of roadways in the township that I feel that the posted speeds are simply don't make sense. And so I'll be bringing something forward before this council at some point this year to, to start chipping away at some of those, and, and then reviewing some that we deem to be of higher priority and, and for council's consideration.
Thank you. Questions on this report? Counselor Fode, and then Counselor Maybe?
Thank you, through your worship, to Director of Operations. What spearheaded this? Was this one resident, was it a group? I'm, I'm just curious as to what brought this forward.
Your worship, through you to Counselor Fode, this was a resident, Mr. Nelligan is his name, and he had indicated to us that he had, had put the request forward through the years and did not receive a response from, from councilor staff. So this is something that this particular gentleman has been trying to get going for a number of years, and, and that's why it's before you today.
Counselor Fode, follow up?
Yes, thank you, your worship. With that in mind, you know, it, it's a nice request, I guess, if, if it suits your agenda. I could tell you there's some timely school buses that wouldn't see it the same. I have a real issue with a request like this, where it affects, in particular Hag Road, I wouldn't know what the math is, but I'll bet you we're upwards of four dozen residents on that road alone. And when you're affecting the people, that many people on one particular road to say nothing on the follow-through traffic that my wife and myself take, as well as many others in the township, I, I would like to see, if we're going to go down this road with this type of presentation for any speed limit on any road in our township, I think the residents of that road in particular need to weigh in on a, on an actual count basis, you know what I mean? I mean, we need to, to ask each and every resident of that road, not, not anybody else on any other road, ask the residents of that road what they want, and we need to set a, a criteria, if you will, that we need to come up with a, a yes number of seventy percent or such before we move forward. I, I have nothing against this gentleman, but I am not in favor of changing speed limits at the request of one. I mean, are we going to do the same if it goes the other way? I got residents who love to see San Bay at eighty kilometers an hour, you do well at McSumr, corners of twenty-five. But I mean, just, just to give a, an opposition view, but that's enough, I'll leave it at that for now.
Counselor Goheen, or, sorry, Director Goheen.
Sorry, through your worship. It's a good point, and so certainly as part of any future requests, typically, those are required to come through as, as full-on petitions of a given roadway. Obviously, that can be challenging as well with some of our folks that may not be around at certain times of year and the sort of thing, but I will add that quite a few folks, we hand-delivered, by the way, noticed at the mailbox on Hag Road, soliciting comment on this initiative, and we did receive overwhelmingly favorable support to reducing the speed limit.
So that's a, it's a great question, Counselor Fode, and thank you for having that information to back it up. Counselor Goheen, just as an aside, I've, since I've become mayor, I've received at least no less than three calls from three different residents, and not the one that brought it forward, asking about this, about safety, about walking on the side of the road, that it hasn't been safe because of people driving extra ordinary, level over eighty in most cases. So anyways, but the point is well taken, that we, we have to make sure that we're using the same consistent approach. So Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Lackey, then Counselor Maybe.
Thank you, worship, and through you to the Director of Public Works. The two pole-mounted roadside readouts, are they portable that we can use elsewhere as well, or is that where they're going to stay?
Your worship, through you, Deputy Mayor, you were cutting out a bit, but I think I, I get it. The ones we're looking to source are, are movable. They're not, they're not a trailer-mounted, we don't see those much anymore, but they are a pole-mounted, and our preference is, of course, to try to find a hydro pole to mount them to, that's near to the road, that, that can pick up the speeds of, of the vehicles. But they can be mounted on other types of signs, temporarily, sort of wood poles, it really depends how long we, we feel we need to, to have those in place. But no, they are movable, they are not hardwired, they'll be solar-powered, and, and very typical to what you'd see, even just nearby to us there on the county road in Mallorytown, that one there is quite similar.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Any further discussion on this motion? Counselor, oh, sorry, Counselor Maybe, and then Counselor Gurrell, I apologize. Didn't need to forget about you.
Well, anyways, thank you, Madam Mayor, and through you, to Mr. Goheen. I do believe, and I see it indicated in your notes there, that there is a bylaw that's on the books that most municipal roads should be sixty K, and I know that last year, I had a call from a resident on Cliff Road, and at that particular moment, there were crews doing it, so that road was posted at fifty, which, because it's a little, little less of a municipal road, or, or the traffic load is less, as well as the eighty Ks, at which most people think is just a normal speed for any road. So if the, if the road is not posted in some fashion, I believe that our due diligence is being lost in, in trying to ensure the safety of all the residents, and even on Cliff or on Hag Road at the east end, with the buildup that has happened over the last few years, and the number of children and people that do walk their dogs, because I have happened to go down that road quite often, a little bit of reduction, I believe, is our due diligence to try to mitigate any issues happening, and at least if it's posted, then it can be enforced. So I'm, I'm all in for, for this particular program to go ahead, and with the portable signs that we have, that we can move around after, after people see that they're going too fast, or, or what the speed limit actually is in actuality, in that we can move them somewhere else, and give, give another road the same opportunity to, to prove to the residents how fast they actually do travel. Thank you.
Counselor, oh, sorry, Director Goheen, and then we'll take Counselor Gurrell's question.
Thank you, your worship, through you, just to, to touch on a couple of those points. Cliff Road, you're, you're correct, we, we did receive a request on that, or complaint more or less, that folks were traveling too fast, and in the bylaw, it is, it's a held at fifty, and I wouldn't imagine that if I analyzed that road as I did Hag, that fifty would be the speed that was indicated, I'll put it that way. But all of us who have our licenses know that in an area that's not built up, eighty K is the speed, and in an area that is, it's fifty, so we're all required to know that. Yes, we could sign every eighty K road that's currently unposted, but those costs can, can add up pretty quickly to get those done, so. And we are looking to purchase at least one of those new digital signs that has the capability of recording and logging both volume and speed, so that we can do our own assessments without needing to, to get the, the OPB involved in the future. That's quite helpful, we find. They're more expensive than the other type, but we feel that they could be advantageous to help us with proving out whether or not we're actually seeing a benefit to these reductions.
Thank you. Counselor Gurrell?
Thank you, through you, your worship, to Adam. Are those, is that a sole source, Adam? And do they come with some kind of a guarantee, or do we have to write, write up some kind of a, a maintenance plan for them? I don't know how robust they are, I see them often, they look like a good idea, but is it sole source? Thanks.
Your worship, through you to Counselor Gurrell, we will not single-source them, they're, they're made by all sorts of different vendors, and we're, we're sort of, we're putting together our shopping list now to, to see what's out there, and, because, yeah, some of them actually communicate with the cloud and all sorts of things, so we want to make sure that, that we're getting something that has a decent warranty and it's a high enough quality, that we're getting our money's worth out of these things.
Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion on this motion? Counselor Fode?
Thank you, worship, through you. While we're on the subject, I have no problem with changing the speed limit, if that's the wish of the more larger majority of the residents on Hag Road. Are we going to touch on developing a set policy on a percentile, if you will, of who governs the decision-making on speeds of their roads? Just a question, because once we leave this, we're liable to come back to it another day, another year, with perhaps a different speed limit on a different road. Are we going to do it, are we going to do it on a, on a case-by-case basis, based on the road?
I think based on, on what was already discussed earlier, Director Goheen, that you were looking at creating a policy, it's just, it's not been created as of yet in regards to how you want to attack these as they come in. I think that's what I sort of heard you infer, but I shouldn't put words in your mouth.
No problem, no problem, your worship, I can speak to that. I did find a document of some sort in our systems when I was looking for the bylaws when I wrote the report recently, and there, so there is a policy of some sort from 2015, I believe, not terribly robust, but, so certainly, I could look at bringing that back as a mechanism that we can use to, to formalize sort of the process that we use in this case, but to require, again, a decent petition of a certain amount of addresses or lots on a given stretch of road, because I know a lot of municipalities struggle with this, because they receive so many requests, and it becomes onerous on the staff to process them. Some municipalities actually have a deadline of October first, or something like that every year, where these requests are received and processed. So certainly, I've only received one in, you know, two and a half years, so I wouldn't consider that to be a high volume, but now that this one's gone through, perhaps there'll be more that, that percolate. So we'll address it through that.
Perhaps this could be added to the action list for the senior management team to review and bring back to council? Would that be kosher? So I believe that addresses what you were looking for, Counselor Fode? Perfect, okay. So we'll go back to the motion at hand, which is in regards to Hag Road, bringing it down from eighty kilometers an hour to sixty kilometers an hour, and it's also purchasing two pole-mounted roadside digital speed readouts to be funded from Infrastructure Capital Reserve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed? Carried. Thank you very much. I know there will be a number of very happy residents to hear that this is passed. So next on the agenda is other business. Does anybody have any other business to discuss? Counselor Maybe? Oh, ma'am. Oh, man. Councillor Mayby, councillor Oki and Deputy Mayor Lackey.
Just as a particular statement, in the recent, uh, happenings of the last week with, uh, the passing of Mr. Floyd and how that has happened, uh, we can be proud that we are, one, Canadian, two, that our enforcement officers in our area, uh, take a total different tact on how they handle people. And we can be proud that we are in our township definitely for all people. Now, it doesn't matter who they are, just all people. We are here for them, we stand for them and we will su- support them. And, uh, it is a unfortunate happening that is going on in our, in the country and being felt around the world on how the segregation happens and how it, um, hits home with certain people. And I think it's only appropriate that perhaps we have a little moment of silence, not for just Mr. Floyd, but everybody who has this happen. And it's, it's just an unfortunate situation that we all need to take a deep breath and realize that we can be better people also and make sure that this does not happen in our community.
I think we will, um, recognize a minute of silence for those who have been oppressed and who have been persecuted based on race, religion or otherwise. And that be grateful for them in a moment of reflection, be grateful that we live where we do and be proponents of, uh, kindness towards all mankind, all of them. So observe a minute of silence. I thank everyone for their pregnant pause and their reflection on that. And, uh, may nothing of that nature happen in our, in our own municipality and hopefully nowhere in Ontario or Canada, although we do know that it does still happen to this day. Um, any other business that needs to, oh, sorry, uh, we had hands up, councillor Oki and then Deputy Mayor Lackey.
Yes, thank you, your worship, and through you, uh, two items. Uh, the first one's rather sad. Um, although I only knew the gentleman briefly in Lindhurst working on the United Church issue, Mr. David Stewart passed on the thirty first of May. I believe he was well known as a history teacher locally. Um, there are no public plans for funeral and under the circumstances, family will have to make some rather, uh, odd arrangements, I suppose. But in any case, I thought people here might want to know that because I think he was quite well known too. The next, um, item is the Frontenac Arch Biosphere and Cataract Way Regional Conservation Authority. Um, Conservation Authority, in their wisdom, appointed me to that organization. That organization never published any meeting or hasn't yet. Uh, a query revealed the fact that I wasn't a member of the board. I was considered an advisor. They have, uh, reorganized their advisors into an advisory council and still not told anyone when the meetings are or what they want us to do. And it appears of the messages quite garbled that I have been disappointed or unappointed. And, um, they've decided that the chair of, or the CEO of, uh, Conservation Authority is on their advisory council. Now, if you follow that, you've done better than I have and I've been reading from your texts. So, uh, all right, I'll leave it there. I think you got the message right. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lackey? Oh, we just wait and wait till you're unmuted there, Deputy Mayor. There we go.
Thank you, your worship. Um, yeah, getting back to levels of service, um, that we're providing the taxpayers. Um, I think we need to go back to what we did when we, when you first, um, declared the state of emergency, um, uh, providing, uh, you know, that not to have to use garbage stickers and, you know, try to help out our residents. Um, I think we need to go back to that, um, 'cause nothing's changed and I don't think anything will change. There's, uh, not a lot of people that, um, are going back to their jobs and there's businesses that are gonna survive this. We need to provide some level of help. And I would love to have a report from staff to show, you know, what we can do further, um, until we can get out of this, um, predicament.
So what you're looking for councillor or Deputy Mayor Lackey is just further, um, ways that we can assist the tax, tax care other than, obviously we can't do anything about taxes, but you're talking about level. Okay. So, um, so we have an emergency meeting on this coming Wednesday. Um, we're meeting every other week now. So perhaps we could bring it up at our emergency control group meeting for further discussion to bring back something to council for recommendation? Would that be sufficient, Deputy Mayor?
Oh, absolutely. I don't, uh, I don't think I need to bring forth a notice of motion. It's just, you know, whatever way we can assist the taxpayer, um, you know, it's a very small way. Um, you know, garbage tags aren't the end of the world, but, um, you know, if you don't have a job, guess where, guess where the trash is going? It's going on the side of the road somewhere. So, um, that's just one of the ways. And if anyone else has any other ideas, uh, bring it forward.
Thank you. So if you do have, um, different options you'd like us to discuss, please ensure that you email the C A O prior to Tuesday, uh, so that we can put it on the agenda for discussion. Um, Dep-, or sorry, councillor Foddy, you had something there?
Okay, your worship. Uh, just a little food for thought for the residents of our township. There's been a lot of negativity toward people assuming a license plate from New York, New Jersey, wherever, they are non-Canadian. Might I remind the residents of this township, the number of families in our township here alone that are intermarried to U S citizens because of the large, in, in one instance, Fort Drum, New York? I could sit here for the next fifteen minutes and name people from our township who spend ample time overseas. I'm sure councillor Oki, Mayor, Major Oki could do a much better job of identifying a number of people. But I think we need to get off, Brian Mayby aptly gave us an opportunity for a moment of silence. It's this type of rhetoric that leads to this dark hole that councillor Mayby brought us to the moment of silence. Don't assume because there's a New York or Pennsylvania plate that they're non-Canadian. And the reason I take this to heart? Our own daughter and her three children and their dog moved back from El Paso, Texas, and they're still isolating under their two weeks of, uh, self-isolation. And they have a Texas plate and they are no more Texan than I am. But I just want to give a little food for thought for our residents. Don't jump to assumption because you see a license plate from outside Canada that the resident is as well. Thank you.
Duly noted. Uh, there are a number of individuals that could not get back, get flights back to Canada and drove up, maybe they're wintering in the U S and they drove back up in their quote unquote, um, U S vehicle. Uh, but like you say, they're very much Canadians and carry Canadian passports. So, um, I'm glad to hear that they're on Canadian soil. Um, and I'm glad, I'm sure that you're very pleased to have them back as well. Um, any other, other business? Um, I just wanted to say something because I don't believe it was brought up, but, uh, we also had another passing of a former firefighter in the township. His name was Albert Ledbeater and he was a resident of the Sealeys Bay area. And he married a wonderful girl from the Lansdowne area, um, and who has been very, a very dear friend for years. And, uh, Albert was a committed community person, uh, as the rest of the family was or is, continues to be. Uh, and we do send condolences to the family and thank, um, thank them for the years of service that he provided to the volunteer fire service in Sealeys Bay. So, thank you. Um, any further other business? Seeing none, I'll just, um, bring up a couple of different points in the mayor's update. I have, going back to, uh, regular scheduled programming. Oh, sorry, councillor Jamison? Oh, councillor Jamison, go ahead.
Uh, your worship, uh, with respect to the notice of motion?
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I didn't mean to jump over that notice of motion.
Uh, my, just one comment to councillor, uh, Foddy's comment. My, my father's family came from Texas. Of course, that was eighteen thirty-two, but, and I don't remember that. But, yeah, we're, we're pretty mixed up around here and we should just accept that. Um, I, it's, I consider this a note, a mo- notice of motion that is a friendly notice of motion. It may not be seen as that. But I would like to ask that this council encourage the library board, uh, in its strategic planning process, to review potential options for harmonizing with other neighboring library services in an effort to ensure a long-term stability and efficiency for, oh, the library in our township and other townships. Um, the reason I would like to bring this notice of motion forward is that to the various comments we've had, we are going to have to look at some very new and creative business models with respect to the impact of the COVID crisis in our township as other townships are doing too. And I think if, if, if the library is going to spend money, um, on a strategic planning process, it simply can't take the introspective look because we may not have, as, as, uh, the deputy mayor's pointed out, the service levels because we may not have the income and we may have to say to the library in twenty twenty-one, "Well, that's fine, but we don't have as much money as you would like." So this is my, um, way of o- offering a friendly opportunity to the library board to put its head up, quite literally, and look around and see where we may be able to benefit from, um, a tighter relationship or for more formal relationship with other services. Thank you.
So that notice of motion will come forward. You can word it appropriately and have brought it, bring it to council. Okay?
I will.
Any, any further notices of motion? Councillor Gurrell?
Just, uh, adding to, uh, councillor Jamison's, uh, concept there, and this is a question regarding that. Would it be appropriate in a motion of that nature to ask about a union board, um, using the terms that I've heard? Uh, would one board, is it legally, can one board uni- uh, join with another board? Or is it the townships that have to do that? That's my question. Does a township ask for it or can the boards themselves join up?
I think the boards can do it themselves because they're separate from the municipality. I, I would defer to the C A O who has been doing some light reading of the Library Act. Uh, that, uh, I'll recognize councillor Oki. He might have something to add to that.
Well, um, just while we're waiting for councillor Oki to be unmuted, um, that one's gonna take a little bit of research, uh, before we can make a definitive, uh, call on that one of who can do what. And unfortunately, the Library Act, as you, as you've seen, is not long on guidance. So, anyway.
Councillor Oki?
Uh, thank you, uh, C A O. That's about what I was going to say. Um, I have heard it discussed in the library board about options for going forward. I wouldn't just naturally assume that people aren't thinking ahead along these lines. Um, in any institution that's had a long life, there is, um, pressure for the status quo, but that doesn't mean that always carries the day. Uh, we might look at the way we've done our own business in the township and how much of a change we brought as a council, which has shocked many people, fortunately in a good way, I think. But I wouldn't just assume that, uh, the library board would not look at that. The other thing, uh, along the lines of what, uh, Mr. Donahue has said is that, uh, the library board generally assumes that it will have the same life as the council that brought it in. So should, my understanding is that should this sort of change come ahead, it would be something with an incoming council, not with a sitting council. My two cents. Thank you.
Because of the, the appointment process, I understand where your thought process goes. Okay, so, um, any, no other, any notices of motion? No, seeing no other notices of motion, I'll move on to the mayor's update. I'll be brief. Uh, June is seniors month, so, uh, I know nobody on council here is a senior. So, you know, you don't have to pay attention to any of this. Um, uh, usually we host seniors expos across the, the township. Um, unfortunately, we're unable to host those events this year. Um, this year's theme is to stay safe and stay in touch. So if you know of someone, uh, that you haven't reached out to or that, um, you haven't spoke to in the last few weeks, stop by, drop, drop some, some baked goods off, do whatever you need to do at a safe social distance, uh, to check up on them. I'm sure they will appreciate the, the porch chin wag, if you will. Um, seniors are a very valuable part of our community and we're committed to them and, uh, we hope that they, um, see this crisis through. I'm sure they've been through much di- more difficult times than some of us have seen. And if this is as hard as it gets, and it is hard, um, we haven't, I've, I've been blessed to not have lived through a world war. So, um, hopefully that is stays, remains the same. Uh, this weekend is also Canada's National Day of Health and Fitness. Uh, COVID nineteen has certainly challenged us to think a little bit differently about that. So if you have an opportunity to get out this weekend and be active, um, maybe put your running shoes on, dust them off. Um, so June sixth, get up, get out and get active. Uh, June is also celebrating Parks and Recreation Month. And, uh, so the challenge with this during COVID is the fact that, um, our, a lot of our parks and recreation facilities are either closed or limited use. Um, so, uh, just watch for the updates. I believe as of today, Parks Canada has opened up a number of their facilities, uh, for day use, uh, which is a positive step, uh, which I would hope include Land and Spay and some other, uh, Park Islands and those sorts of things. Uh, Parks of the Saint Lawrence, I haven't heard, but we'll, when we have our emergency meeting this week, we'll update the township website and update, uh, our residents as to what's going on there. Um, June is also normally a time when we celebrate the achievements of our youth. So you think of all the kids that would be graduating from high school, from grade eight. Um, and I have a grade eight grad in my, my house, um, who won't get to have that celebration. And so if there's ways and creative ways that you can think of celebrating those and letting people know how proud you are of their accomplishments, I would encourage you to do so. Um, uh, please acknowledge, acknowledge their, um, their goals and achievements that they've achieved, even the, even sen- senior kindergarten kids that are moving on, uh, to regular, you know, school every day, all day. Um, it is an achievement and, uh, something we should celeb- celebrate. Um, COVID reminders, the waste labels are required as of right now. We will revisit that on Wednesday at our meeting. And parks are beginning to open, so we'll make sure that those, uh, that information gets out as well. Um, maintain physical distancing, wash your hands, all those sorts of things as well. Um, just another reminder to our residents in regards to lawn mowing. Um, we have, uh, we don't have a regular complement of summer staff, uh, which severely limits, uh, what we can do. So the lawn mowing is happening, it's just not happening as frequent uh, as maybe some people are used to. Uh, but I believe that, uh, we should have some news from some funding that we've applied for here in the near future. But I believe that we should have some news from some funding that we've applied for here in the near future that we might be able to have some funding for a couple of summer students. So we're just waiting for that confirmation. And I'm sure Ms. Goodman will let us know when that happens because if it does, then we might be able to bring some other bodies on board to pick up the slack. And other than that, I consistently, every day, show up here. And it is amazing to me, all the different things on a daily basis that are dealt with, both from an operational point of view, financial point of view, Parks and Rec point of view, even though we are going through this crisis. But things are still moving, and the planning department is starting to ratchet up. Of course, everybody's getting very excited to start their projects. So they're still having applications come in on the regular. So if anybody is wondering if applications, and I received a compliment from the director of planning the other day where she had to meet with someone, went out into the parking lot, stayed a safe social distance away, but got, had the conversation, was able to rectify the person's concerns. And they were very pleased with that, and I heard about that. So thank you very much, Ms. Van Dieter, for that. Deputy Mayor Lackey, you have something to add before we close out the meeting?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned the parks were starting to open and and several other places. Can we touch base with our MPP and see what's happening with the Park Islands?
I believe it was on, there was an announcement made on the weekend. I'll I'll look it up and I'll send it over to you.
I think it was really only a couple of islands, one on either end of our township, but nothing in the middle.
Okay, so we can, I can definitely reach out to our MP. You're talking about our Parks Canada, so MP, I'll reach out to Michael and MP Barrett and get some further idea of whether or not that that will be it for the summer if they will continue to open the islands and stages as well as the other facilities throughout the municipality. Any further questions? Counselor Jameson?
To to, thank you, your worship, to the extent that Parks Canada is opening to some degree, but the locks at Jones Falls, for example, will not be open. So that's a point of concern till later in June, we we are hearing. But it's is a point of concern for people that are interested in seeing some of the business coming down to Sealeys Bay and a variety of businesses.
Fair point. Any further comments before we close out the meeting? Motion on the floor by Counselor Fode, seconded by Counselor Mayby, that the committee of the whole adjourn. All those in favor, please signify. All those opposed? Carry. Thank you, staff. Thank you, counselors. Thank you.